Call the meeting to order, meeting of the Carver Board of Selectmen Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. We have openings on several committees. Please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website for a listing and application. Donations to the food pantry can be made at the Council on Aging or the public library. Mr. Dunham?
Do you want to do the pledge of allegiance first, Mr. Chairman?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our community prayer from Mr. Dunham.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our community in this office, that is our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Dunham?
Before we go to public comment period, I'd like to make a motion that we move the board reorganization to the next item on the agenda.
Is everyone okay with that? What's the pleasure of the board?
I would like to make a motion first, I'd like to welcome Dave. Yay! Great add to our board. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Ron as our chairperson. He's done a marvelous job over the past year, and I think we should nominate Alan Dunham as the vice chair.
I guess you actually moderate.
Oh, I get to moderate?
Enter the microphone, please.
Can I have a second on that, please?
I'll second that.
And why don't we take the chairman first? So with that, is there any discussion? Are there any other nominations? Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank Ron for a great year as chair, and he's continued to follow suit of Dick Ward by bringing this community together and this board together, and I just would appreciate and be happy that you'll be serving again.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Can I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vote unanimously. Mr. Clark, you're the chairman again.
You get to keep the hammer.
Turn the gavel back to you. There's a motion for Alan Dunham to be vice chair. That's been seconded. Any further discussion?
I just too want to thank Alan for working so well together and bringing the community and the town together. And the reason I nominated Alan was I just felt that he has worked really hard in terms of working with the different groups, you know, the unions and the school committee, et cetera, and I just think he works well with everyone, and I think he'll be a great vice chair.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And everyone is sitting where they want to sit for this next session?
Anybody have any complaints?
I have to get used to Alan's mellifluous voice on my left instead of my right.
Well, I figured I'd save your right ear for a while.
All right, then next on the agenda is the public comment period. This is a 10-minute period we have at the start. Let me finish, please, Bob. A 10-minute period that we have at the start of each meeting when we allow residents to address the board. We ask the residents to keep their comments to about three minutes so that other residents will have an opportunity to speak. Were there any residents that wanted to speak this evening?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry?
If I may, before we start, to try to --
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
We do have a fairly large contingent in here tonight. I recognize a lot of faces from the people I met last night as I attended the Plimpton Board of Selectmen meeting. As you just heard from Chairman Clark, we do things a little different in Carver than each town is wont to do in their selectmen's meetings. We have just a 10-minute set aside for public comment that can either be on agenda items or anything of concern to the citizens of Carver. That being said, I know why you're all here, but this is not a hearing or discussion on the proposal that is still in the formative stages being proposed by the Redevelopment Authority, which everybody knows is an autonomous board in the town of Carver. They're the ones that are creating this plan, however it ends up, what their final version is. But this is not a hearing for that. It's not -- this is our working meeting, and there's no time for a big, long discussion with it, so we will be staying within -- if the chair concurs within our 10-minute timeframe for public comment. We will be later on just getting an update. This is an update only. Originally, I was hoping we might get someone from the RDA to give us the update, however, due to scheduling conflicts, they were not available. Mr. Melonowski has been kind enough to go ahead and will be able to provide us that update. I can't stress enough that this project is the RDA's project. This is not the planning boards, not the Board of Selectmen, it's not the town administrators. This is a proposal and a plan being developed by the Redevelopment Authority. As I told what the people in Plimpton know yesterday, there is a procedure that'll go on this. Basically, the RDA will come up with a final version of what their proposal is. That'll go to Planning Board to make sure that it's within the spirit and the scope of our master plan that was voted on by town meeting. Every town has a master plan, and anything of this size has to go ahead and be in conjunction with it, in the spirit of that master plan. Then, if the Planning Board, and that's the only input the Planning Board has on this project, then it will come to the Board of Selectmen. We will be having a public hearing, however long that takes, how many days that takes. But we'll be taking in everybody's concerns. We'll be listening to worries and things like that, and we may have to set up some ground rules, because I anticipate it'll probably be a fairly well-attended public hearing when we get to that point. So, you know, I didn't want -- I know in the Plimpton Board of Selectmen meeting, they're very much open, you know, they had a large, open period, and they were kind enough to let me speak. I was recognized by one of the attendees as being there after I did let the chairman know before the meeting that I wasn't a tenant. My original plan was just to sit back and listen and take, so I could learn the concerns of the residents of Plimpton, our neighbors, just to our north, because we've got to try to be good neighbors if we can. And they were nice enough to invite me to, if I wanted to address anybody or any point, I was able to do that. But as I said before, we run our meetings a little different, as every other town has a difference. So ours is a 10-minute public comment, but we're, you know, it's not a hearing on, you know, on everybody's, you know, you're not all going to yet speak. So it's just the way this is. That time will come.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I guess I would just also add, for members of the board, that similar to the way the zoning board has to be cautious as they're entertaining a 40B, we should also recognize that we have to be careful in anything that we address publicly, because this is going to come before us eventually, and so we want to be above any accusations of biases one way or the other. So just advise caution for the board. I know that there's been an awful lot out on social media, some of it very reasoned, some of it bordering what seemed to be very, almost on the outrageous, and I would just caution everybody, before you accept anything that you read on Facebook or any place, just double-check the facts. Make sure that what you're reading is accurate. Okay, so again, back to the public comment period, which we invite residents up to speak for up to three minutes. And Mr. Belbin, thank you for waiting, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, could I say something briefly before?
Sorry. Okay, Bob, go ahead and sit down. We'll get you this far, anyway.
It's going to be real quick. I just wanted to point out that when we do have our public hearing, we, there is an action, and there is input that the Board of Selectmen can make, in the same way we did for a 40B project. We can discuss, write, approve a letter after we've had all the input from the public that says whatever we agree it should say.
I guess my caution was, prior to knowing what the full plan design is, to be cautious in any of this.
And that letter can be sent both to the RDA and the Department of Housing and Community Development. I just wanted to make that clear, that we do have that ability.
Yeah, I wasn't contesting that, simply that we should make sure that we wait for the appropriate time.
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Belbin?
Robert Belbin, 26 Gate Street. Wow, that's loud. I'm coming here today because of executive session meeting minutes. I've researched in the town clerk's office, and it's very tough to find executive session meeting minutes for this board. I don't know if you don't file them with them, but I'd like to submit an information request for executive session meeting minutes, because also, I know you have this blank statement here of executive session, but you don't say specifically who you're going into executive session for, and I think that's one of the issues that the state has, that you actually say that you're going into executive session for this person, or this union, or whatnot. And having this blanket statement, as you do on all of your agendas, it doesn't specifically say which one you're actually going to talk about. So I think it needs to be clarified a little bit more, that you're going in to discuss this particular union or this particular contract issue.
Bob, I understand what you're saying. We'll have it checked again. We had originally had this checked to make sure that it met guidelines. I will recheck it and make sure that it is acceptable to the Attorney General's office.
Right, just because, like I said, it covers everything. The problem is, is that if I want to look for a certain executive session meeting minutes regarding a certain issue, I can't find that in history. So I figure if we get the ball rolling, find out what you guys have, all right, and start reviewing it every other week or whatnot.
We'll look at it from two points of view. One, is this acceptable? And two, can we be more specific without -- because we always obviously want to be cautious and not violate anybody's or any union's rights and so forth. So Elaine, if we can put that on the agenda, have an answer by our next meeting, please.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Belbin? Were there any other residents that wanted to approach the board this evening? There being none, the next item on our agenda actually is the appointment of Richard Ward to continue to represent the Board of Selectmen on the School Building Committee. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reappoint or appoint Richard Ward to represent the Board of Selectmen on the School Building Committee.
Second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Ward has been the chair of that committee for almost since it's, you know, for a lot of its inception. Barry Strutsky was the chair for a period of time, and Dick took over those reins, has done a great job shepherding that project through. And to go ahead and, just because he's retired from being a member of the Board of Selectmen, I see no reason to go ahead and try to replace him this late stage in the game where the project is so far along, I think just for continuity purposes and the fact that he does a great job, we should continue to have him as our representative.
Totally agree. His passion for that subject matter is just incredible, so I'm totally on board with that.
Yeah, I firmly believe that the passage of the school building, that Dick played a major role in helping create the climate that allowed it to take place, so.
No question.
So we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, those in favor?
Mr. Ward did want me to share something with you, and you were discussing this.
We're not concerned whether Mr. Ward's interested in accepting the position.
He is at home right now, enjoying watching this, eating popcorn.
Just as long as he doesn't throw the popcorn at his TV.
And again, our collective thanks to the job he has done and will continue to do, and we're looking forward to starting construction of the new school. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. At 7:10, we were supposed to have Connor Skinner with an Eagle Scout project for approval request, but Connor, like you can imagine, has a lot of activities going on with sports and school, and so unfortunately, those conflicted tonight, so I believe we'll see him at our next meeting. So we'll pass on that for now. We have a request for a special license for a winery to sell at the Carver Farmers Market.
That's a repeat, is it not, from last year? From the year before?
I'm sorry?
No, this is the Farmers Market.
Right.
We do it every year.
No, this is a special request for a winery.
But I think the winery can't, why aren't we here?
Yeah, why don't we let him talk? There you go.
Was there anyone here that wanted to speak to this particular agenda item?
Why don't you remind us?
Don't mind us.
If you could identify yourself and --
My name is Ian Edwards. I'm the operations manager and wine-making assistant at Running Brook Vineyards in North Dartmouth. We have not actually participated in the Carver Farmers Market in years past, but are looking to actually expand the farmers' markets that we participate in. This past summer, we participated in four different farmers' markets. This summer, we are looking to participate in six, with Carver and Sandwich being the farmers' markets that we're expanding to. We have approval from the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture to sell and sample wine at all of the farmers' markets. I have sent that to the town of Carver. Maureen, I believe, has that.
Right, questions from the board?
I was just going to point out, Mr. Chair, that a previous board approved a blueberry farm license for them to do the same thing, sample wine, and I believe that we asked them to check with the police chief on how he wanted, if they wanted some sort of, you know, traffic control, so to speak, there, and I think there were some minor things that he requested, just so, you know, we could assure that one person had one sample and didn't overdo it.
Yep. All of our employees at Running Brook are E-Tip certified nationally for pouring and checking IDs, and so that is actually required in order to pour alcohol at all in Dartmouth. So all of our employees carry that certification, as well as we have board of health permits and the required licenses and everything.
Yep. If we approve this one, and then the blueberry farm comes to us for the same thing, would we be okay with two wineries at the farmers' market?
I don't see why not. Competition, you know, they're different wineries.
I did, I do have an acceptance letter from Michael Nash, the market manager at the Carver Farmers Market, approving us to take part in this market for the summer session.
Alan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Just curious, is this a locally-produced wine?
100% estate grown, vinted, and bottled in North Dartmouth.
You're doing mainly grapes or cranberries?
Only grapes.
Only grapes.
No fruit.
Can you do a cranberry wine?
We could if we wanted to.
You have a cranberry industry in town that could use a little bit of a boost.
Right.
So I think I heard you say you will explore it. Is that correct?
And bring back samples next year.
That's right. I heard something about a pizza party.
Why don't we approve it before you stop bribing him? We need cranberry wine.
We need a motion to approve.
I move we approve.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Well, we should make contingent on whatever local permits and approvals from the chief.
Yeah, contingent upon --
If we need one from Board of Health, I have no idea.
Contingent whatever permit is necessary in a visit with the police chief, just anything else?
I move with the changes made by Ms. Hewens.
The second?
Second.
Further discussion? There being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Put forward to it.
You'll be opening when? No, I'm just a gentleman.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Seven?
See, we don't have Dick here anymore, so we don't know these things.
I know.
Well, I think it's the first Saturday in June, isn't it?
Yeah.
But I could be wrong.
June 12th.
June 12th, okay, thank you very much.
You gonna have that wine with your chicken wings?
Oh dear, Ward, it's gonna be a long night.
Excuse me, we have a request for appointment to the Cultural Council of Jen Reardon. You should have her application in your packet. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move --
Jen is here, good.
Jen is here.
I don't know if I have to come up, but.
It's always good to come up.
And we have Mr. Philip in attendance as well, so I guess we will ask each of you to make your presentation.
Jim Philip, 27 Forest Street. I'm the chairperson of the Cultural Council, and as many of you have known, it's tough getting volunteers in town to represent committees, and when we do get someone, we're so thrilled, and with Jen's abilities, we're absolutely astounded that she's coming on board, and we might have one or two other people of that quality also. So the culture will be coming up in, as far as what we're going to be able to do. The importance of the Cultural Council in this town, it's a state-approved thing where we get $4,400 this coming year, where we can spend on any kind of a cultural thing. We have Owls Day, where you can watch owls in the public library, there's nature walks, there's people coming in giving demonstrations and speeches, and we try to find out who wants what in this town. And if we do not have a viable council, it means that money goes to other towns. So we've been able to hold on by our teeth on this, and I'm tickled silly now that we're going to have people of Jen's caliber to help us out.
Jen, did you want to add anything?
I'm just glad I was on the PTO board where we had a scientific dome come to the school for three years straight, and over 800 students were able to see the dome, and I'm just glad to be on the Cultural Council and be able to give back to that grant that I got for three years.
I'll make a motion to approve Jen Reardon.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions from the board? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jen.
Jen, thank you for volunteering.
I didn't come up here to hold Jen's hand, I came up here so she could hold mine when I gave the message.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We know you need it.
Let's see, we have a request for appointment to the Agricultural Commission Associate Member Jennifer Van Dusen. Is Jennifer here this evening? You should have the application in your packet.
Mm-hmm.
Jennifer's looking to become more involved in the community.
Yeah, who?
This is the Ag Commission that Mr. Ward is a part of, I believe?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? See, Dave, this job isn't that tough.
It's, so far, it's going very well.
All right. We actually had a couple of other last-minute requests come in that hadn't been anticipated. I'd maybe throw those in now. One was from Fred Weston. This should be in your packets, I believe, for the Old Home Day Car Show in the Town Hall parking lot, and so that if we could --
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion?
This is basically in conjunction with Old Home Day. It's been several years in a row now, it's a very popular addition to Old Home Day, and I would highly recommend that we approve.
It's a car show and tractor show?
That's right.
Okay. Do you have a tractor you want to?
Yes.
And I think it includes trucks, too, right? And trucks.
Made and seconded. Further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We also have a, this actually is an oversight for the New England Farms in North Main Street. When they came in for their alcohol license, we should have done the common victuola license at the same time, and we got lost in transmission, I think, because we were, you know, had a significant discussion on the alcohol license. So I'd ask whether the board wants to approve the application for the common victuola license.
I move we approve.
Yeah, I've been there, it looks okay.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I think it probably should be subject to Board of Health.
Subject to meeting the requirements of all obligatory departments.
Right.
Not this. This is a Board of Selectmen's license, they get the food license from the Board of Health.
Okay. Thanks, Elaine.
But if there are any others they need to see, that's part of this motion.
Yeah.
We're just saying.
Just saying.
We're pretty much insane, Dave, just so you know.
I see this.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. All right, we will move now to the town administrator update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the first thing I'd like to bring up is that the Finance Committee, we are looking for some new members, so if you're aware of anyone who may be of interest that can, that would like to be on the Finance Committee, we, again, will be looking for new members coming into the next fiscal year.
You stole my thunder.
Oh, I did? All right. I'll front.
Selectmen's updates.
Selectmen's updates. The second item is the update on the elementary school project. This morning, the consultants with the two estimators are reviewing the 60% design development documents, and the preliminary review that I have is that everything is still within budget on the elementary school. So that's, the most challenging estimate was the one that we did about two months ago, and that one was within the budget, as this one is too, and this is being done without cutting back any programs within the school. So as was designed, that's still the project going forward, and we are within budget based upon those estimates.
Mr. Chair, just for, so the public knows, are we still reasonably on schedule for putting the shovels in the ground in September?
September, October is when we're looking to award the bids so that they can move forward on that. So yes, the answer to your question is, we are providing the opportunity for the contractor to get the foundations in the ground before the winter.
Okay, thank you.
And we've accelerated to make sure they have that opportunity.
Right, because that was part of the action we took last winter to accelerate the process, yeah.
Right. And therefore, by doing that, we wouldn't be responsible for having winter conditions because we gave them the opportunity.
Any questions in the school?
Fire station, fire station's coming along very well. I see we have one of the members of the committee in the back of the room. And so far, we have had some owner initiative change orders and some actual change orders on the project, but that's all within the contingency we have. These are some minor improvements that have been done throughout the project. It is also on budget, and we don't foresee any issues with that. So that project is moving along very well, and I just need to compliment the team that's working on that with the committee, and also led up by our two chiefs, former Chief Harriman and also Chief Weston, they're doing a phenomenal job, and I think Chief Harriman's, this has basically become a full-time job for him, probably about 50 hours a week. So it's affecting his golf game, but he's doing great for the town.
He can tee up at 7:00.
He can, he can. So that's going well also. If there's no questions on either one of the building projects, I'd like to move forward with a factual update with the Redevelopment Authority in where their plans stand. So again, I think as the chairman mentioned, and also Mr. Dunham mentioned, who attended the meeting down in Plimpton, what I'm doing right now is just providing an update based upon where the facts are that are being reviewed by the Redevelopment Authority, as well some updates. There are lots of information that's out there in the public domain right now, and not all of it is accurate, but some of it is well thought out. That being said, let me just, if we can go up here to the slides that I have, this is, in essence, the area that's being proposed for redevelopment, where you see on the bottom right, that's Route 44, and then heading up on the far right vertical, that would be Route 58, and then kind of diagonal to that is the Montello Street. But what you can see beyond the cranberry bogs is the center of this site was a stump dump, it was an old sewer treatment plant, it was a sand and gravel complex, it is a blighted open area, and this is the area the town has determined that it wants to have development through the town's master plan, calling in for a mixed-use development. In addition to that, the town went forward and zoned the property a green business park. That's the brickish color shown there. Again, you have Route 44 to the south, in the middle of the slide, you have Route 58 bisecting that, and this is the area that's on the Plimpton-Middleborough Line. It's predominantly either all highway commercial or all green business park. The highway commercial is, I guess, the purple color that you would see there. So again, sticking with the master plan of the town, this is where the town determined it wanted to have its economic development occur to provide additional tax revenue and job generation to the town. economic development occur to provide additional tax revenue and job generation to the town, primarily because it's right on the interchange, and also the town has invested millions of dollars in putting a new water system with the North Carver Water District into that area. When the zoning was approved back in 2010, it has a couple things that I just wanted to go over and, and update everyone on. The first is, it does not allow residential use in that zone for the green business park. If you are a residential property, you are grandfathered, but it does not allow new residential development within that area. What it does allow by right, and by right is, does the property have the appropriate size lot, does it have the appropriate frontage on an approved public way, and does it fit within the proper side and rear setbacks to build a building. The uses that are allowed by right are retail, medical, office, manufacturing, assembly, processing, wholesale, warehousing, distribution facilities, research and development. So, these are what whoever owns that property, provided they had the proper setbacks, can develop by right. This is the, the right of the landowners that are there, and this is what the town has determined is appropriate use for the area. The redevelopment authority has been working on exploring these plans for well close to a year right now. And last month, on April 13th, the redevelopment authority went forward with a plan, this is a more dense development plan, that it had been looking at, again, since the summer and the fall of 2015. And at that meeting, they sent out notices to all Carver residents that live within the area.
Was that a formal public hearing?
This is not a formal public hearing, this was a invitational meeting that the redevelopment authority sent out to the Carver residents to try to get their input into the plan.
Mr. Malinowski, did they send notices out to Plimpton residents as well, that about the property?
As I said, they sent them out to Carver residents to get input from Carver residents on the plan, and that's, that's the decision the redevelopment authority did. Again, I'm just providing information.
I'm providing information. I apologize, but that's not the case. We have people here that write comments.
Proceed.
Thank you. So, it was sent out to Carver residents to invite them to come to the meeting, and, and so they, they came to the meeting. At that meeting, there, and you have a copy of the minutes of those meetings and the discussion that happened, there were several items that came out of the meeting that the redevelopment authority was interested in, in trying to find out. What did the residents of Carver think of the plan? What were the comments that they had? And as I go to the next slide, these are just a couple of the bullets that came out of that meeting. There was considered flipping of the orientation of the buildings and the parking lots, looking at very sized buildings, relocating the access to the southern edge of the property to minimize impacts on the truck traffic, and potentially try to avoid the three residential properties that may be impacted. I want to emphasize that there are anywhere between zero and three residential properties that may be impacted by this project. So, the maximum is three, the minimum is zero. That's the range that we're talking about. This second bullet was recommended by, by Mr. Cole to look at the possibility, again, of running the road on the southern access. There was also some discussion where certain property owners talked about potentially offering some vacant backland they had, that they weren't going to use if that would lead into a better design. There was a lot of emphasis on existing traffic problems at the intersection of where Dunkin' Donuts is, that need to be addressed and corrected, and there was a desire to determine what the potential project benefits in, for jobs, tax revenue, and, and what the market analysis is for that project. There were a lot of other emotional and a lot of other individual sensitive items that were discussed at that meeting, and the redevelopment authority will continue to take those into account. But what I'm going to show in a moment is just a quick highlight of what they're going to be discussing at their next meeting. But I first, since this ended with market analysis, I wanted to talk a little bit about the redevelopers agreement that the redevelopment authority has. As was mentioned, the redevelopment authority is a separate body politic, is a separate governmental body within the town of Carver. They have entered into a developer, redevelopers agreement with Route 44 Development, that has been reviewed and, and, it was actually created by Town Council to protect the redevelopment authority and to foster this cooperation going forward. There are funds that the developer is providing to the redevelopment authority for them to use at their discretion. The third bullet is really important, is that the agreement, in essence, indemnifies the town of Carver, the redevelopment authority, so that these, there are no expenses the town of Carver will be picking up on this project. Those are all going to be paid for by the developer, and that, again, this is a legally binding document between the redevelopment authority and Route 44 Development. With that, Route 44 Development has funded the urban renewal planner, which her name is Hayes Development, that has been working with the redevelopment authority. They have recently funded a market analysis, to update the market analysis that was done by the town, I believe it was six or seven years ago, so that's being updated as we speak. In addition, the re, the developer is providing funds to pay for the redevelopment authority's legal expenses, and is also paying for the statewide permitting that will have to occur through what's called a MEPA process. So, again, this is an agreement that the redevelopment authority entered into last year with the developer, it indemnifies the town, and it makes the developer pay for all the expenses that the redevelopment authority determines are necessary to move this project forward. Out of that one plan that was presented, there have been, in essence, three different scenarios that are going to be discussed at the next redevelopment authority meeting. Before I just real quickly skim through those, those scenarios are broken down into three different transportation options. And with those transportation, basically roadway alignment options, each one has what large buildings would look like, a 1.1 million square foot distribution facility, or what smaller buildings would look like. That is all dependent upon the market conditions as to what final entity or what final project will like to come in and buy some of the land from the developer, assuming he goes forward with this project. And so, one of those plans is, in essence, the layout similar to what was presented on, on April 13th. The second plan is a plan that avoids any and all impacts to the three existing houses. So, that's a plan that would have zero impact to any of the houses. And then the third scenario is also a plan that would have zero impact to the three houses that are in question. So, just real quickly, and, and again, you'll, these will be available at the redevelopment authority, this is the Concept Day, and as you look at the two of them, just, oops, just between the two of them, it's just large buildings and small buildings, that's really the difference. They have similar roadways that was discussed before. Then we go to option B, and large building with B, small buildings with B. This provides a ring road around the three houses, and thereby not impacting the three individual residential properties as some suggested be done in the, the plans. And then finally, option C is the southern road access that was mentioned by Mr. Cole to avoid the residences altogether and bring it into the southern route. So, again, those are the three scenarios that will be discussed at the next redevelopment authority meeting. I've had a chance to meet with a couple of the three residents since that meeting, and I will continue to reach out to the residents that are in the project. And I guess my last piece that I just want to emphasize is, these are still conceptual plans, these are plans that the redevelopment authority is working from. They had that first public meeting, now they've heard some comments, now they're coming back with five additional different scenarios. They will start to weigh and evaluate those at their next meeting, which we believe is going to be May 23rd. It may be scheduled the following week, but I think that's the timeframe they're looking at. And it'll be up to the redevelopment authority to come back with a preferred scenario that they believe is going to balance the townwide interest versus the neighborhood interest versus what they've been charged to do. And at that point, then that's when we'll start to have a, a plan to discuss and react to. So, Mr. Chairman, that is the end of my presentation.
Mr. Dunham?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just a couple of things I'd ask you to, if you could, Michael, to pass on to the redevelopment authority. I don't know if they've been involved yet, but I would respectfully ask that they make contact with the fire chief, police chief, EMS director, and Director of Public Works. I know they'll get more intimately involved once actual buildings are decided upon and put in there. However, I feel they really need to know the potential scope of this project, so they can be planning one, two, three years out, whether they're going to need more resources, they need their manpower, or equipment, be it a new tanker or something else like that, so they can start making those plans now. Two, I would ask that, you know, relay, you know, as long as the board doesn't object, that you just relay back to the RDA to continue to always think openness and transparency. I think their meeting was a good first attempt at that, and I don't, they shouldn't be faulted for that meeting. In fact, I'm glad they did, because they did get some good input. So, I just ask that they keep, keep in mind, you know, just like we had to do for the elementary school. And the third thing is, could you please ask them why they're still trying to put the planned show, that hotel and mixed-use building in the middle of a wetland?
That has been changed.
Oh, good, thank you.
That has been changed. And, and just for clarification, then, I, I was a little perturbed about that, too. In essence, what they were trying to describe, and they didn't do a good job of it, or the consultant didn't do a good job of it, is that as development occurs in that area, there may be a potential for the owners of the strip mall in that area to redevelop that, and they could redevelop it on its existing site as a hotel right off the interchange, but they had it located adjacent to it, trying to show a cloud to point back there, but they didn't have an arrow, and they didn't connect it back to it.
So, basically, they're just looking at, you know, if the developer wanted to, and the property owner of White Silo Market, because that is a fairly decent, the plot and the footprint of that land is a lot bigger than what's just currently being used.
Correct.
They could go ahead and, somewhere down the road, if they so choose. Wouldn't that file under the category of a, of the height restrictions we have in the town of Carver, though?
Well, it doesn't have to be a significantly tall facility.
Oh, okay.
So, it would fall within the design guidelines. So, that has happened. I can comment briefly on the public safety. We did have our department head meeting this morning that included police, fire, EMS, EMA, and also DPW, so they are aware of the project, and that, and where it is in the stages right now of conceptual components, they do have that. And then also for openness and transparency, again, the initial meeting on the 13th was designed for Carver residents. Since that meeting, the redevelopment authority has put together an email list, and they have been sending that out to Plimpton residents that ask to be put on the list as well, as to when the next meetings are going to be coming up, in an effort just to provide more information going out. And again, that's why I had asked to do this tonight, even though the chairman was out of town, is just to provide more transparency on the, on the project, because there are a lot of statements that are made that are not consistent with what the, the facts are of the project at this point.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just think it's, you know, important that everybody realizes we're still, we're not even close to having, or the RDA, I don't believe, is even close to having the finalized plan. Anything that's on this scale goes through many iterations during its lifespan before a final recommendation. So, I ask that people keep that in mind, definitely, you know, keep up with the latest on what's coming out of the RDA, what their thoughts are. But, you know, to get totally hung up on one plan now is, you know, is probably wasting, you know, not really wasting time, but, I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot of energy being expended right now for something that's not even going to probably look that close to what was originally presented on April 13th. You know, the project still has a long way to go.
Thank you. Helen?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask if everyone in the audience that wants to be has been put on that email list. So, is there anyone that's not on it that wants to be? Go ahead, can we take their name down?
Name with the email address. Home residents too would be good, too, just so we know where you're, you're at.
No, you're very welcome.
Just move it fast for a foot that's been...
Yeah, the boot's still on.
Yeah, that's, it's good speed, though.
How are you?
Did you do your foot?
Uh, don't ask. You don't ask. Does it down?
That's not nice.
The next item on the agenda was the update on the Planning Board's Technical Review Committee.
Yes, just very briefly, I, I know Mr. Dunham asked us to be on the agenda. The Planning Director has been meeting with different department heads and is looking to revise the facilitation technical review process, that's a component of the Planning Board. In order to do that, she needs to meet with the Planning Board, so that they, to determine exactly how they want to go forward in making sure that they receive the proper reviews after the public, after the applicant has had a chance to present their plans publicly. So, that is an ongoing process right now, and she is working with the different department heads on that. So, I just want to give you an update on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could you stand over, please?
All right, we go to the Board of Selectmen update, and we'll start with Ms. Maroni.
I have...
Unpredictable, I call them different orders every time.
Yeah, no kidding. I have nothing to say except thank you to the Plimpton residents for coming down.
Plimpton.
Plimpton.
Them too.
Bye, Jeannie. No, I just want to say another new beginning to a new season with the new elected officials. I just want to congratulate everyone that won the election on April 23rd, including but not limited to Gina Kavicki Hanlon, Andrew Cottorelli, the school committee who's in the back of the room, and Dave Robinson. I'm really happy to have you here, and all the others that won.
Not that you don't miss Dick.
Oh, I can't even talk about him, I'm very sad, but, just put me, put me on the spot. Go ahead. But that's it.
Ms. Hewens?
Yeah, and I, I wanted to welcome Dave as well, and to congratulate those who won, but also want to thank everyone who ran. It's really hard to run for office, it's, it's pretty stressful, and, and I thank you for your, for your service in just simply running, whether you won or lost.
Mr. Dunham?
Oh, yeah, a few things. First off, if they can still hear me out in the hallway there.
They're leaving.
I did want to thank the Board of Selectmen of the town of Plimpton, as well as the residents that were in attendance at that meeting, for the very courteous nature that I was received with. You know, I, I went into that meeting because it was basically, they had on their agenda item to discuss the impacts of Carver's urban development renewal plan. So, I, I really went up to try to find out, you know, get a better impression and understanding of the concerns of our neighbors to the north. And I got, they, they were very polite, they did come up with some, what I thought were very cognizant concerns, mainly which... thanked by several of them for attending the meeting. So I wanted, you know, offer my thanks for all involved in last night's Plimpton Board of Selectmen meeting. Like my cohorts in crime here, I want to congratulate not only the winners, but everybody that ran for office in this latest town election. Sarah's absolutely right, it's not easy to go ahead. We have Connie Shea back there. Andrew Cottorelli, newest member of the Carver School Committee, Gina, David for us, also David McCarthy. So we actually had three new people in town who had never run for office before ran. We had one person who had run for office before, but has not been elected. So it was good to see this new, you know, new people coming forward to go ahead and serve the town and their fellow residents. And we, hopefully, will see that trend continue where we'll get more people involved and an interest. Those who were not successful, and this is where I'm accusing Michael of stealing my thunder a little bit, it is vital that we get some new blood into the Finance Committee. With the election of Andy to the school committee, that finance committee is down to four people. That is the absolute minimum they can have to even hold a meeting. So if somebody can't hold a meeting, you know, can't attend either sickness or vacation or whatever, that committee cannot meet. It's a great chance to really get in to, you know, people say, "Well, I'd like to start doing more with the town." This is a great opportunity. But not only the Finance Committee, but all the committees. You know, one of these days, I'd like us to go ahead and actually read off all the vacancies on all the different committees and departments that have openings, because it takes a lot to run this town. We need a lot of people to step up. There's a lot of people saying they have the interest in it. Well, now's the time to go ahead and really get involved. And you may decide, "Hey, I kind of like this," or, "I may want to run for office now because I've been on something." So I ask that, you know, the residents really take into consideration of joining the Finance Committee or other committees within the town. And other than that, David, welcome. One of the reasons I moved over here was because I was actually having a hard time seeing the screen over there, and now I've got a real good shot.
You're so cold that you wanted to air.
And now Michael is only out of the corner of my eye, not looking directly at me.
I like you over there, too.
Mr. Chairman, can I just duck to you one thing that, um...
Could I stop you?
Well, absolutely, you could. I'm a new person with the...
No, I would not.
No, with the Finance Committee, I have spoken with a few friends or Carver residents about joining the Finance Committee, and it typically goes without saying that. They say, "I would love to be part of it, but I don't know a thing about finances." I don't want, please don't be discouraged if you are not a financial genius. This is, it's nice to have the experience of finance behind you, but you learn the finances when you become part of the Finance Committee. And it's more being a voice for the residents when you are on that Finance Committee until, so you will learn about the finances. So please don't let that hesitate, anyone that may be interested in joining the Finance Committee, to certainly apply. That's all.
That's an excellent point. Mr. Millenhouse?
I'd just like to pick up on that point, because Helen's right on is, is the Finance Committee members, what's important is to have a broad range of residents in the community to evaluate things that come in front of the Finance Committee, because we present projects to them, we present budgets to them. Do they make common sense? Do they understand them? Are we, are we getting the most value out of the taxpayer dollars? That's where the Finance Committee comes into play a lot. We have our Finance Director, we do the, you know, all of the pro formas and all of the big spreadsheets that are, that are very complicated, but that's not really what the Finance Committee has to do. Their role is to more be a reason of the citizens to, to review what's presented to them and to, to make a, a, a decision weighing out the pros and the cons of each individual item. And that's, that's where their assistance is, is needed, just like on the Capital Outlay Committee that does the exact same thing.
Mr. Robertson?
Well, spotlighting you. I am absolutely pleased to be a member of this board. I have met all of you, and you are spectacular people in your own right, even you, Al. I like you.
Thank you. I know that was hard for you, David.
Full disclosure, they grew up together, so, from like the first grade, I think.
Yeah, for very, earlier, I think. When Mr. Ward asked me to run, I thought he was a good friend of mine, and then I realized what it takes to run, and I realized that he and I need a little talk. I am really looking forward to this. I ask for your forgiveness in advance for the mistakes I'm about to make, but please bear with me, I'm, I'm all in, I'm 100%, and I appreciate everything so far.
Thank you. I've got a couple of items. One was, and this is just pure aesthetics, but that contraption we have sitting out front that advertises when it's town meeting or whatever, it's, I find it just a tad unsightly to have that parked out on the town hall. Oh, we have such a beautiful town hall. I mentioned to Michael the possibility of maybe looking into getting a sign similar to what they have down at the high school. And Michael mentioned that the fire station has plans or design of that nature. So I guess what I'd ask, since perhaps there's no need to be repetitive, have one here and one over there, is in your discussions and as members of the Building Committee, if, when significant events like town elections and town meeting and so forth are coming up, if the fire department would be willing to allow those items to be shown there, then there would be no need to put something out front here. But I would like that to perhaps be formally brought up at one of your Building Committee meetings to see if that's acceptable.
Providing the sign meets our signed bylaws?
Well, the thing about that, I was going to mention that, too, because I, as, as far as I know, the town doesn't actually have to comply with them, but I think we should. And I have to say personally, I'm not a big fan of the sign at school. At the time when it was constructed, we didn't allow internal illumination. That's the only positive thing about this one out front, that it's, it's really temporary. It just sort of is what it is. It's not technically internal illumination, and then it goes away. But, you know, that's up to the, the Fire Station Building Committee, but I, I would agree, I would hope that it would at least try to comply.
At the same time, though, you, you know, I don't know that hanging letters would...
There's lots of ways to make signs that, lots of options.
At any rate, something that adds, something that allows the machine in front to be gone is what I'm looking for. We have a beautiful town hall, and it, that's a little...
It's distracting, too, when you drive through there. You're looking at it, and you get all this traffic coming in and out that...
So just a suggestion that I'd ask you to pursue.
And I, and I agree, but I have to say that I believe the police department put that there for us, just sort of as a public service.
No, no, I, I, no, I understand it's a public service, and it serves well, unless the community knows what's going on, I'd just like to see if there's an alternative way of handling that.
I agree.
Also, just one, my congratulations, it was a good town election, and I think Helen referred to the, the fact earlier that I think we've seen, seen a significant shift in the town in terms of people working together and agreeing to disagree civilly without, you know, any of the vitriol that has sometimes characterized some of the previous elections and so forth. So I was really, really proud to be working and standing with the folks, and I, I thought that, you know, there have to be winners and losers in every election, but I thought that really everyone did a great job, and, and I, and I know what it takes to, to, to run, and it, it's putting yourself out there. It's not, it's nothing that, you know, you're, you're out there for the world to see, you have the debates, you're, you're visiting with people, you're answering questions. And so I have great respect for everyone that ran, congratulations to everyone that won, and I hope that going forward, other residents will step forward, because there is, you know, a little gray hair in this committee. And so that, obviously, the ladies don't have the gray hair. But anyway, so thanks to everyone for the, the job that they did. Also, my compliments to the town administrator and his staff for the way town meeting was pulled off, also to the town clerk, the treasurer, everyone. I thought it was a great town meeting. This is the second year now that we've managed to have town meeting before the town election. We operated on the premise that it was sort of unfair to have a selectman in school committee folks coming on board and jumping into the middle of a financial season and making decisions that they really had no opportunity to be familiar with. And so we stepped up the pace. We had town meetings only a few years ago in June. Now we have them in mid-April. This year, we, excuse me, just to, just to make it a little more difficult, we asked the town administrator and staff to have the budgets done 30 days ahead of time, so that the town would have an opportunity, a full 30 days, to review everything. And they, we managed to pull that off. Next year, we're adding yet another little trick, which is to have all the articles done 30 days out, and fully vetted. No, not, you know, fully vetted by, you know, not sitting around waiting for the legal staff, our legal staff, to review them. Done. So that 30 days prior to the election, articles are done completely, budget is done completely, town residents will have a, a good month to review everything before going to the town meeting. So I know it's a tall task, a tall order, but I, based on what this staff has been able to do so far, I have every confidence that we'll be able to achieve that. I'd also like to suggest that possibly the FINCOM and the Capital Outlay Committees get involved earlier in the process. I think Capital Outlay was almost at the very end of the process. I think as soon as the budget requests come in for, for the various departments, get those right to the FINCOM, get those right to Capital Outlay, let them have their meetings, and then everyone can work together to get that, those items done. But again, my compliments to, for pulling off something that is not easy. I recognize that. Edenville Railroad will open on May 28th. I think I heard a rumor that it's, you can, I don't know if they have a Carver Day, but I believe on the 28th, if you go, you can bring a friend who gets in free. I'm sure they'll be publicizing more of that. But there's been a lot of work done down there. I think anyone that was there last year knows that they were still in the process of working on some things. The winter's been much kinder, they're able to get more work done. And I know my grandson is anxiously awaiting getting in to see Thomas the Train Engine. So that, and then the Carver Lions are holding a breakfast from 9:00 to 11:00 on Saturday, May 21st, down at Council on Aging, if people might consider going to that.
What time?
9:00 to 11:00. We've also, and I'm going to ask Elaine to put this in your packets for our next meeting, we've received some recommended resolutions for our consideration relating to Chapter 70. Essentially, I think most of us, at one point or another, attended one of the sessions that were held around the state, just where towns were given the opportunity to express their concern that the state has backed away from the monies that they've been providing to the town. And the formula has been changed, and in fact, in recent years, some of the more well-off towns have been seeing their monies increased, while those towns that have a much greater urgency have seen their towns go, their monies go backward, and that definitely applies to us. So one is a resolution in favor of the state restoring Chapter 70 monies to where they should be using the correct formula. The other is a little more controversial because it has to do with the charter schools and the cap on charter schools, so, but those have come in. I'll have those put in the packets for everyone to review. And what's being asked is that we actually endorse or not endorse each of the resolutions, so that I'll have those on the agendas for the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, could we have those, the copies emailed to us so we can review it well before the meeting?
Yes, yep. Michael, I believe you have copies of those as well?
Yes.
Elaine, I'll email those to you.
Wake up, Michael.
I was awake.
All right, I got it. I got it, Michael. I don't want to overburden you with any extra tasks. You're not, you're not texting me, are you?
No, I'm seeing if I have that document.
Okay, and then also, I just also wanted to make an appeal for the Finance Committee as well. Way back in 1992, that's where I started my first endeavor in town, in the town, and it is, I think, if you're interested in getting involved, it's a great place to start. You get a complete overview of what goes on in the town. You find out very quickly as you, I mean, sometimes I think we tend to sit back and you think you, you wonder if this is right and that's right, and the waste and so forth, and then you get to meet the people and the department heads. You find out that, you know, the DPW that maybe have some complaints about is, are probably down two to three people from where they were in 1995, so that they're being asked to do more with less, and that's not unusual to that department. You come to appreciate the, the fire department and the tremendous, you know, job that we get from the fire department at a fraction of the cost of what other towns have. And the police and everybody, so I just think, for, for anyone that's interested, and I think, Helen, it's an excellent point, you don't have to know municipal finance. Within a year, you will be as expert as anybody on the committee in understanding how things work. So I do, it's, it's a great place, and if anybody's thinking that they want to be involved with town politics, and again, as we spoke earlier, giving back to the community is, is so important, and this is a great place to start, to get a nice overview. You may decide to go to school committee from there, you might decide to look at the Board of Selectmen, whatever it might be, but, or you may decide to run home and hide after your experience. But it is a great place to start, it's a great place to get an understanding of how the town works. And then, again, and then just my congratulations to everyone that ran, as I said earlier, Gina Hanlon Kavicki, I think, I think you said Kavicki Hanlon.
I apologize, Gina. Forgive me.
So, and I know Dave McCarthy ran, to Andy Cottorelli. Andy and Gina were the, the winners for the school committee, and then, of course, Dave. Congratulations to you and Connie, thank you for being involved. And I'm done.
Amen. A- sorry.
I was going to say that 8:45 coffee is going to be in jeopardy here.
Well, the town administrator has been elongating his time allotment in order to try to win a couple...
It's not your fault.
So what's next, Ron?
Pardon me?
So what's next?
We're kidding.
Okay, we will move on to the adoption of the Board of Selectmen policies, the Board of Selectmen Code of Conduct, the bloggers' Code of Conduct, the agenda policy, revised financial management policy, et cetera. You should have copies of all these in your packet. We'll start with the Code of Conduct for the Board of Selectmen. Michael, do you want to address each of these for whether there are any changes in them from prior years?
Be more than happy to, and if I could, just for our new member, and I'm sure Mr. Robertson is very aware of what's, these are, but annually, what the Board of Selectmen determined to do three years ago is to revisit their policies so that each board adopts them or makes changes. Why these are very important, particularly when it gets to finance policies, blogger policies and so forth, is, in essence, this is the direction that the Board of Selectmen are giving myself and the rest of the staff to operate within. So these are our guidelines, if you will, from a conceptual standpoint, from a global standpoint, as to how we operate. So it's really important for the board to revisit these every year, if they want to modify them, to do it. These are dynamic documents, some do need to be modified on an annual basis. You'll see some recommendations with the, the financial management policies, and I think the chairman wants to modify also the, the agenda policy. But again, they're very important from that perspective because it gives us the guidelines to work within, the rules, if you will. So, to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, I am not aware of any changes that anyone has brought to my attention for the Selectmen's Code of Conduct, which basically describes how the Board of Selectmen operate amongst yourselves and then also with the staff.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Further discussion? Being done, those in favor, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I, I just want to emphasize, as I have in the past, that I think the part four of this Code of Conduct prevents us from speaking to various people, town staff people, and I just think that that's, it's, to me, it's unacceptable to be prevented from speaking to people. So, that's my protest.
Yeah, and I guess, I think we've agreed to disagree on the interpretation of that, so...
Well, it says limit contact to specific town staff. So it's hard to, to interpret that anyway, except for what it says.
I, I, I think there's an underlying intention to, so as not to undermine, you know, the town administrator and staff in doing so, I think is the underlying intent there.
And also, Mr. Chairman, to set up a protocol that's easy to follow, that everybody knows, so, you know, we can't go, it's just common courtesy that you follow the procedure.
Well, I think all of us would try to exhibit common courtesy.
And these are, the school committee, if I could, also has similar Code of Conduct, so when...
And also, Mr. Chairman, to set up a protocol that's easy to follow, that everybody knows, so, you know, we can't go, it's just common courtesy that you follow the procedure.
Well, I think all of us would try to exhibit common courtesy.
And these are, the School Committee, if I could, also has similar Code of Conduct, so when, I think, when you had your joint meeting, I think the chairperson of the School Committee was mentioning that once the School Committee votes for something, even if it's a split vote, then the entire School Committee follows the vote of the Board. So, once the vote has been made, the issue's dead, it's, that's now the will of the town to move forward in that direction. So, they have similar type stuff as well.
Any other discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, or no, yes, I'm opposed.
The Board of Selectmen suggested Blogger's Code of Conduct.
I move we re-adopt.
Second.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I just, just.
Go get your head up there faster.
I know, I gotta get up there faster. I just wanna call out item number two, is that, you know, it says in there, when you encounter conflicts or misrepresentations, that we all make every effort to talk directly to the person involved before publishing that material. In essence, that we all have an obligation, that if there's misinformation being sent out on social media and other things, that we do try to correct that individually where possible. So that, because it's important that if we don't say anything and false information's being presented out there, people assume it's true until someone challenges it. So, I, just given what's happened with the Redevelopment Authority, I just wanted to bring that up again.
Thank you.
Well, it is becoming more and more important, people use Facebook.
All social media, really.
Oh, exactly.
How many followers do you have on Twitter?
Why, have you been up here?
No, I'm curious. I would follow you on Twitter, if you had a Twitter follower.
Or if I had a Twitter account, sorry.
I'm being rushed along. Those in, if there's no further discussion on the Blogger's Code of Conduct, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We have the Board of Agenda Policy. The item I wanted to bring up here was the fact that we've, one of the changes is that we originally, when we adopted it, we had citizen participation at the start of the meeting and at the end of the meeting. Last year, we modified that, so it's just at the start. What I would like to get clarification from, from the Board is, I've been interpreting that as an opportunity for residents to address the Board. And what I'd like to know from the Board is, would you prefer that ten minutes be reserved for residents to address the Board, or would you like that to be open for anybody in attendance to be able to address the Board?
I would like it to be anybody in attendance. I think citizens, I mean, of course, it's the chair's meeting, so technically, even if this is adopted and you want to allow Person X to speak, this is your meeting, and you could do that. But I think, I think it's better to keep it open to everyone.
Right, that's why I wanted clarification. I've always interpreted it to be residents, and if that's not the intention of the Board, then I wanna adopt that.
I don't think it should be.
Mr. Chairman, I would say, I agree with that partially, however, given it's a limited timeframe, if we have a, like we had tonight, a large contingent of non-residents that would have loved to speak, spoke to us, you know, it would be Carver citizens first, and then if any remaining time, citizen, you know, other people that would like to address the Board.
Since normally ten minutes allows three people to speak, perhaps if I said, are there any residents that wanna speak first? And then if there were three residents that used up all the time, then that's that. But if there's only, if there were no residents, or only one resident, then, I'm just.
Yeah, then you'd open it up, the other two could go to. Citizens from other towns.
Was there anyone else, any non-residents that wanted to address the Board, so?
Yeah, I would, I would, I think that's a good compromise.
Yeah, I don't know that we have to do anything to the policy, I just wanted to get clarification.
It really was intended originally for the Carver residents, but, I mean, the open envi, you know, like a situation like this.
Yeah, I mean, I can try to provide a preferred status to Carver residents, but oftentimes...
Well, as long as they don't, you know, intentionally monopolize the entire fifteen minutes, knowing that they're.
Ten.
Ten, knowing that there are, you know, twice as many non-Carver residents sitting there.
If the chairman sticks to the three-minute limit, that, you know, shouldn't be a problem.
Well, I think, I think Sarah's suggesting that it could be an organized effort to try to not allow someone that's from the town to speak, so I guess we'll just try to be aware of that, you know, in going forward, but.
You know, and if there's that much, you know, if there's an item that's of that great, great importance to the citizenry, we could always go ahead and make a motion at that time to extend the citizen participation timeframe, too. That'd always be a possibility.
It's completely up to the Board to do something of that nature, and, and I might remind the Board that on many occasions over the last year, we've had no one that wanted to address the Board. So, I don't wanna over.
Never say never.
I don't wanna overplay this, though, either. Michael, do you have something you wanna say?
Just a comment, I mean, Sarah's correct, there are sometimes organizations that like to run from town to town and take an opportunity to profess something that we don't wanna, you've seen some of the Hitler-type things that are allowed to speak in a public forum on a, on a sidewalk. Technically, by that interpretation, they could come in here and do that. I think to meet your intent is, maybe what you wanna do is say that, you know, the intent here is for Carver citizens, but the chair does have the authority to recognize anyone at their sole discretion. Therefore, you've kind of determined ahead of time that this is for Carver residents. However, you've given the authority to the chairperson that when you have a situation like tonight, he can recognize people from other towns, but you don't allow just.
Anybody.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a good ad.
And again, I mean, that's, that's good that you articulated that, Michael, because that's, that's the chair's prerogative anyway, whether we like it or not. But it's good to have that articulated.
And again, I think, I don't think we need to change the wording, it just says, citizen here, so it doesn't say resident, so, but I wanted some guidance from the Board as to how to utilize the discretion going forward, so.
Mr. Chairman, I also think we need to be consistent with the policy and what's on the, on the agenda. It should be, no, it should be saying citizen participation period, not public comment period.
Ah, okay, can we make that change in the future, Elaine? We'll call, instead of public comment period, we'll call it citizen participation.
While we're revisiting through, Mr. Chair, should we consider having one at the short one at the end as well, for residents that may work late and may come to the meeting later? It's just an idea.
Well, again, that could be at the discretion of the Board if we wanted to do that. I mean, we originally had both ends, and we were having nobody approach us at the end, so that.
And we'd get a feel, 'cause we see everybody that comes in and goes out. I mean, it's not like we're ignoring, so if we see three or four people come in and we know there was a very touchy topic that was discussed during that meeting, the chair would be within his rights to say, you know, make a motion from the Board to have an additional citizen participation period.
And I think, again, if you're giving me guidance that that's what you'd like me to have as discretion, I'd be glad to use it.
The only reason I'm mentioning, maybe putting it into the policy, is because then it will be on the agenda, because someone out in the audience may not know that they have that ability to speak at the end. So, if you put it on the policy, it will always be on the agenda, just like people came tonight knowing that they can speak at the beginning of the meeting. Whereas if we just kinda do it based on what's happening that evening, people that possibly would've come from work to speak about something may not know that they can.
But by the same token, if we put it as part of the agenda, they're gonna, then we have to have it, both of them, every time, that it's on the agenda.
Unless we put it at chairman's discretion.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know. It was, again, it was just an idea to.
I think we eliminated it, 'cause it was never being utilized. And I think it was also to combat not make people wait for the end of the meeting, 'cause I think originally, before we went to both, it was at the end of the meeting.
Right, it was.
So that, and then we added it at the front, so. Well, we see how it goes, and then we can adjust on the fly.
Yeah, I recommend that.
In other words, I'm being shot dumb, but that's okay, right?
But we did it gently.
You did, you did gently.
Was there a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's Agenda Policy?
I don't believe so. I move we re-adopt.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Milonowski?
Want to try that again?
Mr. Milonowski, would you care to update us on some of the changes that have taken place in the Financial Management Policies? We see a lot of red lines and corrections in here.
Yes, the Financial Management Policies, we've had some updates as a result of discussions we've had with the rating agencies as they looked to Carver, and some of the changes that they were suggesting that we could be a little bit stronger on. So, those have been incorporated. There was also some attempt to clear up the language. I have had some comments, Mr. Dunham came in to provide his comments on there, which I believe are incorporated in this. But in essence, if I can just jump through here, really, in the middle of the page, the financial objectives, which had a ten, a twenty-year forecast, most towns do a five, some do a ten. We had originally put the twenty in year in there, looking at, from our capital plan standpoint, because twenty's good for capital, because you need to know when you're gonna replace the roof and so on and so forth. However, that being said, with our new capital plan that we instituted, that really accomplishes that. So, that twenty-year projection, those last ten years in an operational budget are a little bit, they're best estimates, whereas that issue for planning for our capital is already addressed in our capital plan, so that's why that was changed to ten years. The next major item, and again, we can go through these in as much detail as you want, item number.
A number of these are simply changing words to be, so they're used more effectively.
Correct. If I jump down to policy statement number three, this is where we need to focus on, you know, grants and one-time funds, and I believe what Alan brought back is, they're only to be used for one-time expenses, and they're not to fund operational costs, 'cause there's no guarantee that you're gonna get a grant the next year. So, if you go out and hire somebody, well, and that person has to be terminated the following year, where did you incorporate all of the unemployment costs that you're gonna have to pay for that individual? Because municipalities, all towns are self-insured, so we have to pay those unemployment costs after the fact.
Also, I'm gonna have to mention the cost of training of the, an individual that's being paid for by a grant. It's after a year, that person's gone, because we can't afford, pay for it out of the town funds. So, basically, that's resources we lost getting the individual trained.
That's right.
Item number four is a clarification, when we developed these policies in the beginning, we had a goal of getting to five percent of our revenue in general stabilization. Well, with the actions we just took at this past town meeting, we're close to the seven point five percent, which is the equivalent of about four weeks of operational funds for the town. And what the rating agencies didn't like is they didn't like the word "goal." And they didn't say, well, what does that mean? And they wanted us to have a little bit stronger language, which says in here, it, you know, it shall strive to maintain a balance in the General Stabilization Fund of seven point five percent. And they also wanted some language in there, well, if it falls below, what's your plan to build it back up? Because that's what they're looking for as a well-run organization, okay? Sometimes you have to tap into it, and that's okay. But if you tap into it, how are you gonna build it back up? And so, that's why that next clause was put in there, that we'll focus on transferring, you know, future free cash and other one-time funds to build it back up, should it go down. Again, none of this affects the operating budget, these are generally all one-time monies. Item number five was really combining item number nine, which has been deleted into item number five. These policies, again, were created prior to us adopting and accepting our Capital and Debt Stabilization Fund, which has been hugely successful over the last couple of years in funding our capital projects. So, this is just trying to combine that into one paragraph, and, and that's, the funds are there, that all debt and capital fall out of that, that fund. Finally, when we get to item number eight, item number eight is, again, we use, we changed the word "goal" to "objective," they want a little stronger language, but we've also updated based upon the funding numbers, so that with the actions the town took, we've significantly reduced our OPED liability, and this just has a new updated number in there. And it just emphasizes we'll continue to do the work that we're doing. So, you know, these may not seem like a lot to you, but because these documents are reviewed and very important to the rating agencies, and they brought these up, is that this is the time when I wanted to bring these up to you, so you can go back and do some modifications. We will be going out for at least another ten-plus million dollars of future bonding in the next probably, probably twenty-four months, so it's important to get these up and running.
That would be for?
Police.
That would be for police, and also the middle-high school roof and windows and doors. And just real briefly on that one, Scott Neef and I and Dave Sigintoff are working with MSBA to work through our application, so we can receive funding from them on that project.
Wasn't the new roof already part, voted on, on one of the capitals?
Correct. So, the roof, windows, and boiler were, were voted on by town meeting last year, and it's subject to getting MSBA approval, but that, so that borrowing authorization was approved, we'd still have to go out and borrow the funds for it. So, we have the authorization to do it.
It'd be like, a lot like we did, we combined the new fire engines with the new fire station.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, I do wholeheartedly concur on dropping that forecast from twenty to ten, 'cause basically, once you get between ten years, you're playing with monopoly money, you know, fairy tales, basically, 'cause you just can't have any kind of idea what the state's gonna do, and, you know, I don't think you can realistically project growth that by right, either.
I would like to just mention as well that while we have adopted over the last few years some financial policies that have actually been voted on and adopted at town meeting, these are financial policies of the Board of Selectmen. It's objectives that we wanna maintain, and I think most of our votes over the last several years have reflected our desire to adhere to these policies. But they are policies, so that in a time of financial crisis, we do have the ability to move in a different direction, if that's what's necessary, so.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I kind of liked the word "goal," but striving to maintain, if that's the language they, the rating agencies want us to use, because I think it's important to understand that there can be cases where striving to maintain this goal is robbing Peter to pay Paul, and sometimes it's not a good idea, and, you know, a little flexibility is necessary.
I believe the word "objective," though, correct me if I'm wrong, that was more as a result of the discussions with the bonding agencies.
Well, I was referring to number four, not number eight. But, objective, it's, it's the same idea. It's, this is not a law, this is something we think is a good idea.
This is our financial policy.
Think it's a good idea, and sometimes it can't happen.
Right, and I think that we need to talk about that, 'cause that is really important to emphasize that, again, is when you adopt these policies, this is what staff will follow, so it's, in essence, become our law. But, you can change these, so in times of need, you can redirect us and come back and say, although our policies say this, we need you to take this action in this time of need because of X, Y, and Z, but we as staff, we as the department heads, can't deviate from these unless you tell us to. And this gets back to my earlier point, is these become our roadmap, our guidelines as to how we operate. So, this gives us our parameters to work within until you tell us otherwise.
And, and I would argue that having these policies in place and voting based on these policies are what helped lead us to have an auditor sit in front of us this year and tell us that the town of Carver fiscally is being managed better than our peers of the same type, type of town, so.
And it'll go in a long way into getting a much better bond rating for the new school.
It's already, I would argue that the following these policies has paid gigantic dividends to the town fiscally, and helped, helped lower the tax burden on the new school. So, was there a motion to approve the financial policies as amended?
I don't believe so, but I approve, we approve the policy with the amendments.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Now, there's an et cetera after the Financial Management Policy, was there anything else, or is that et cetera just an et cetera?
I don't think there's anything else.
Unless you have any other policies that we're not aware of.
This is your opportunity to put a new policy together.
I didn't want to, did, were, did any of the members of the Board want to introduce a new policy that we have not yet considered at this time?
Helen, behave.
Very well, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Happy, you're a good girl.
Water rates at Cranbury Village. This was an item, I think, it came up at town meeting, one of the residents of Cranbury Village pointed out that there's a surplus currently in the Cranbury Village Water Fund, and we wanted to get some clarity on that as to whether it's enough to perhaps offer some funding. We know we have to keep money in reserve in case of emergencies, so I guess we'll ask the town administrator for an update on that.
That would be lovely.
Absolutely, we do need to maintain money in reserves for our enterprise fund, so when major capital equipment dies, or needs to be replaced or... equipment dies or needs to be replaced or maintained, that we have the funds available to do that. They'll be outside of the normal operating budget.
Excuse me, is there a, similar to like the 7.5% for the general stabilization fund, is there a number that's in mind for these types of funds that should be held in reserve?
Not from a percentage standpoint, but there are ongoing expenses that we have to be aware of, and what it costs to replace different pieces of equipment, and so on and so forth. That all being said, is that what I'm going to recommend that the Board of Selectmen do, and we can look at this every year on an annual basis, is that for FY '17, that you do a 25% rate reduction for Cranberry Village. And the finance director and I have ran through the numbers, and we believe that we will still come in the black for FY '17, barring any unforeseen issues. And if there are unforeseen issues, that we do have a reserve fund to tap into.
What is in the reserve fund now?
Right now, as the reserve fund that's been certified is $182,000 in the Cranberry Village. So that's what we do have in reserve.
And it's your belief, or your analysis is, and who did you work with on this?
Finance director.
That with a 25% decrease to the residents of Cranberry Village, that that still should cover the operating budget?
That is correct. And again, we do have the buffer with the reserve retained earnings, should we need that to cover those. Now, again, I'm not suggesting you do this permanently, because we want to address the rates on an annual basis and just make sure that they're appropriate.
And that's part of my concern, is that once you drop 25%, very difficult to say we have to go up 10%.
Which is why I'm asking for you to do it as a one-time basis for this year, as a 25% one-time rate reduction for 2017.
If that's the case, if we want to talk about it as a one-time, we need to make sure that we are very, very clear, if the board decides to do this, that the residents understand this is a one-year effort, and will look again to see whether we can maintain the rate. I would want to make sure the residents don't get a surprise, and I wouldn't want anybody a year from now saying, "What do you mean, my rate's going up?" So that, I just want, I think it's very important that there be proper communication.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion first, so we can continue on the discussion.
Sure. Does someone want to make a motion to approve a 25% decrease in the water rate for Cranberry Village residents?
I'll make that motion.
One time for 2017.
One time.
I'll make that motion, one time.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Yes, I just wanted some clarification. When you said there was enough money in the reserve fund, are you talking about the Town's Reserve Fund, or are you talking about the Cranberry Village?
The Cranberry Village. It's the enterprise fund, but as part of an enterprise fund, it has retained earnings. That, in essence, is the reserve.
And that enterprise fund can only be used for the Cranberry Village water?
That is correct. It can only be used for that. It can only be used to repair equipment tied into that facility. And otherwise, we don't want to get into a point where we're subsidizing that organization like we are the North Carver Water District. So I'm trying to make sure we keep a buffer there to do that. But we brought this up last year, too, I believe, the Board of Selectmen, and we wanted to get some more stability with the department. And Meg and I, the finance director and I, believe we have that stability for this year to be able to recommend that you do a one-time 25% rate reduction.
I just wanted the residents of Cranberry Village to understand that the reason we can't use that enterprise fund to, you know, pay them back or something, I mean, it's set up for a very specific purpose.
Set up for emergencies.
And that's all it can be used for.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Do you think, since this would be a year-to-year, that we would assess it, do you think we should have some sort of benchmark, for example, like start off with, what typically should we have in the reserve at any given time, and then work our way backwards to see what a percentage could be? Just so that way, the village residents will at least be able to foresee what they can possibly expect the following year, instead of being blindsided. And that way, we have some sort of mechanism to at least start.
I know what you're saying, Helen, but I guess if, you know, if a part goes across $10,000, that's one thing. If something blows up that costs $300,000, then we've wiped out the entire fund, so that it's, I don't know that we could give the residents any real assurances without knowing what the crisis might be, or what it might be.
Well, actually, I believe the process that's recommended accomplishes what you're looking for. They already know what the rate is. That's the same rate we've had for the last couple of years. That's probably what the rate's going to be for the next couple of years. So they know what their expectations are. This is, basically, we're giving them a reduction for this year because we believe we can. Next year, they, you know, they should assume it's going to be the same rate that it's always been.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Why do you, I just want to understand how you came up with a 25% reduction, because it needs to be realistic. What did you use when you said, "We think you can"? Like, what happens if something does blow tomorrow that's $300,000? I mean, don't get me wrong, I am thrilled to make this motion to approve. They deserve to have fairness within that village. I just want to make sure that we're not going to do them injustice if something should happen.
I think to Helen's point, cutting it 25%, you basically think we're going to scrape about even, from the sounds.
I'll tell you exactly how the math is to your question, is basically, I have a four-year historic understanding of what the expenses were, plus the revenue.
Four years?
Four years that we have right now, that I have. And the ranges range from expenses being anywhere from $33,000 to $69,000. So that's a wide range that's in there. The revenue that comes in is about $70,000. So one year, we hit the revenue and the expenses were the same. If I look at the four-year average, that's about $45,000, $46,000 is what the expenses are. We're bringing in $70,000. So I took a four-year average, and then with that, I said, "Okay, let's take the four-year average." Knowing that we have, the retained earnings is the buffer, in case this is another $70,000 year, that if I use a four-year average, hopefully the law of averages will play out. If not, there is a buffer to handle, you know, an issue.
Great.
That was how.
Just want to see that there was some sort of method.
And I guess my concern, though, is, for instance, this year, there wouldn't be, in all likelihood, there might not be any extra money to go build up the enterprise fund any further.
Correct.
And I think the goal should be to try to build the enterprise fund, so that it's almost crisis-proof, that, you know, because we know we have to put money into maintaining it. Now, is there maintenance money within the operating budget?
There is maintenance money within the operating budget, and the retained earnings at the 182 is a number that I'm comfortable with, holding and trying to keep to that number. So that if we have to tap into it this year, then next year, we'd have to look to try to replenish that back up to around the $180,000.
I guess I'm just wondering, if I was a resident, would I rather get a 15% decrease that will be maintained next year, as opposed to 25% for one year?
I was wondering that.
And then it's going to go back up to what they were paying this past year?
I couldn't recommend that to you, and I'm going to tell you why, because, again, we go from $33,000 one year to $69,000. The expenses fluctuate based upon ongoing operational maintenance issues that have to be done, where things just blow, that fall within, parts blow or break.
There's a greater likelihood that we could maintain a smaller decrease, just through applying logic. If we said it's only a 10% to 15% cut instead of 25, there's a greater chance that we'll be able to live with 10% to 15% again next year.
But then again, if we're collecting $70,000 in revenue, and one year, the expenses were $69,000.
But I think Ron's point is that we would still have more money.
If you're collecting 85 instead of 70, then you're actually...
Oh, you're saying go up?
Yes. I'm saying, I'm saying...
I'm sorry, I thought you were saying go down 15%.
Not an additional 15, no, no. I'm saying that if you only made the cut 10% to 15%,
To start with.
Probably being hated by Cranberry Village residents.
But you would be able to count.
I just think it's going to be tough to go back to people and say, "Now the rate's going back up 25%."
25%. Why don't we start with 10 or 15%? Is that what you're saying? We're more likely to be able to keep it there, rather than having it go back to 25?
Are any Cranberry Village residents present?
What is the, through you, Mr. Chairman, what is the estimate per resident of, what's 25% that they're going to be saving? Is it $10?
To my knowledge, they don't pay the individual bill, it's the complex that pays the bill.
It's the complex.
So it's into their CAM, their operating projects, so the whole thing. So it doesn't impact everybody. They pay their monthly fees. Then some people use more or less water based upon vacations, or one or two people in there. And then that is then paid for by the whole complex.
But it does, I know what you're saying, but it does impact them? I mean, it's still a bill they have to pay.
They own, that's cooperative, right?
They own.
So you would think the cooperative would turn around and pass the savings back to its residents, or at least that would be the expectation, right?
Mr. Chairman, I actually like the idea of reducing the savings this year, and next year, we'll have a better chance of not only keeping that, but maybe increasing the reduction next year. So it gives us some more wiggle room, so, as you said, they don't get shocked by, "Oh, I saved 25% this year, but I'm back up to where I was before." Because, you know, the residents have to, you know, do long-range planning, too, so I like the idea of probably going down to 15% reduction for this year, and then...
Which will give us a greater likelihood that we can either maintain that, or it might only have to go up 5% instead of the full 25%.
And it'll also allow us to have that reserve fund increase.
I just wish I knew, like, per resident, because 15% might be $5, whereas 20...
25 would only be $15.
It's still a reduction, whatever it is.
So it'll be up to the cooperative and their board of directors to determine how they account for this. They've already budgeted the full, let's say, $70,000. Then if we knock 25% off of that, there's going to be a little bit of savings. Do they invest that into their own programs? That's up for them to determine.
Just to completely throw monkey wrench into the whole thing, do we want to perhaps consult the board of directors of the cooperative and ask them if they have an opinion?
I think that's a really good idea.
All right. Two yes, two noes. Dave, it's up to you. You get to break the tie.
Yeah, we should absolutely talk to those people.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move...
Because we have time to enact this prior to, this is a fiscal '17, right? So we could take this up at the June meeting, right?
Would you like me to reach out to them and have a conversation and see what their preferences?
Mr. Chairman, I move, we have the town administrator reach out to the cooperative, Cranberry Village, so we can get their input as to see what their druthers might be.
There a second?
Well, I'd actually like to have someone representing the cooperative here.
And then, once you've had that conversation, ask someone to attend at our next meeting?
I mean, both, yeah.
I guess I just need to ask, what clarification are you looking for?
To find out what they might be more comfortable with. Would they like a one-time 25% cut, and then maybe the rates go back up to where they were this past year? Or would they prefer to go 10% to 15%? And then there's a greater likelihood that we can maintain that rate the following year, as opposed to knowing we have to go back up again?
And will the residents...
The lower the discount we give them initially, the greater the chance we can maintain that particular discount. That's the working theory. I sense some skepticism on your part.
At the end of the day, you have an obligation to oversee an enterprise fund, and you have to determine what your revenue is and what your expenses are. And you have to make that decision as to what you need to charge people to do that, whether it's Cranberry Village, or if this is any enterprise fund. And you also have an obligation to maintain a reserve in there. So the decision is yours as to what you're looking...
I know it's our decision, but I guess if I was a resident there, thinking for myself, I personally would rather get a 10% discount now and know that my rate's probably gone down 10% into the future.
And also...
You can't guarantee that.
I know it can't be guaranteed, but the likelihood... You have to agree, the likelihood is greater that we can maintain the rate for the lesser discount that we get.
And that we can maintain the enterprise fund.
And it does grow the enterprise fund, which I think is also important, to put additional monies in there, because that gives us a greater sense of security.
Mr. Chairman, now through you, we do have the time. This isn't a time critical. It does no harm to us to get the input from the cooperative, so...
Through you.
My motion stands.
If I may, I, um... Michael, I just think it's a good idea, because we know that we can max at 25% based on your numbers tonight, but I think it would be good to get a buy-in to see how the residents over there feel in terms of the shock of the bigger jump the following year, or whether they'd like to do the 10%. But I don't, I don't think they need to come here. I think having the conversation with them is...
Invite them to.
Invite them to, but I don't think it's necessary.
Invite them to attend. Well, it might be, to be honest, I mean, to have someone here, I mean, I get through saying that if we're going to do the 25% discount, let's make 100% sure that they know. So by having a specific discussion with the board, then it's, you know, it's right there that that's happening.
Michael is going to call.
Right. Well, I'm saying, and then he can extend the invitation if they'd like to come speak to us.
And then if they come and speak to us, it is televised, so that the people in Cranberry Village can watch it.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I think we beat this one to death, but you seem to be in agreement at the board.
Motion made and seconded table to the June meeting. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Town Administrator, you are clear as to what you have been tasked. Is that correct?
Elaine is, so I'm going to be clear.
It's all that matters.
We need now to move on to an appointment of a Board of Selectmen representative to Serpent. Who is our current representative?
Dick Wardwell, was he?
No, isn't it Marlene?
No. Oh, that's right. That is correct. But this is saying a Board of Selectmen...
She was our Board of Selectmen representative.
So would she do it again? We don't know that.
Yes.
She will.
Yes?
Then I'll make a motion to reappoint Marlene to be our Board of Selectmen representative on Serpent.
And I'll second that.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Got through that one.
Yeah.
Appointment of the, Elaine?
JTPG.
Which stands for?
Joint Transportation Planning Group.
Okay.
That's a Serpent organization as well.
Part of SRPPDD.
And who is our JTPG representative?
John Woods is the alternate.
Yeah, we can have John Woods be the delegate.
Oh, I know. I move we appoint John Woods to be the...
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Now, do we have to have an alternate?
Sarah's kicking.
Yes, why don't we appoint Chris Vincent? I move we appoint Chris Vincent as the alternate.
Second.
Further discussion?
Aye.
Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Chris is the foreman of the DPW, in case people don't know.
Thanks, Sarah. Just so we don't have...
We already voted. Try to keep up. Minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated. We've already taken care of the bulk of that. Let's go to the minutes.
I move we accept the minutes of April 19, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the next...
We have one abstention over here.
Oh.
I wasn't here.
All right. The next Board of Select, did you want to speak?
On the next item.
Well, I was just going to the next Board of Selectmen meeting.
Aren't you glad you're chairing it for another year?
What was it, Rodney Dangerfield, get no respect, Mr. Town Administrator, did you want to address the next Board of Selectmen meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would love that opportunity, on May 16, we're going to be having our facilitator come in, Jeff Nutting, we've met with him for the last two years to talk about the goals and objectives for the Board of Selectmen, that meeting has been scheduled for 6:00 PM, and we're actually going to have it downstairs, I believe Elaine, in the, in the basement, and what I'd like to do is, and I mentioned this to the department head meeting this morning, I'm going to have Jeff come around prior to the meeting, probably a week or so before the meeting, and meet with a couple of the key department heads, just for him to get his own independent feel for some of the changes that have happened in town and how we can continue to fine-tune some of the progress that we've made, and, and I guess that comes back into, to the, to the agenda item, you've all filled out surveys before for Mr. Nutting, and we're talking about what type of questions do you have to help build the agenda for that meeting. I think in previous conversations, we've spent a lot of time in trying to look at the next year to try to continue to fine-tune the changes that have happened versus completely brand-new initiatives, and I know there's been some discussion on goals and objectives that you've had some preliminary thoughts on, and so I'm just looking to get a little feedback from you right now to help frame Jeff when he comes in as to how he starts that discussion.
I, I'd like to add that we moved, we, we tabled setting up the town administrator's goals and objectives at one of our last meetings and said, why don't we include that in this process, so let's make sure that goals and objectives that the Board of Selectmen is setting for the town administrator for fiscal '17 are also part of this discussion.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how the board wants to handle this, I don't know if we want to just think about this and be each responsible for emailing thoughts to the, to the Elaine and Michael, and they can be collected and then considered?
I think that's good.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you, I kind of, I'm kind of caught, having to think on the fly all of a sudden now on this one, I'd like to be able to.
When have you ever been stuck thinking on the fly?
Well, you know, there's a first time for everything, I think, so I would recommend, you know, ask that we could go ahead and just think about it and then, as you say, as Sarah says, email Elaine, what are you counting?
I was just noticing the seats right here, we've got boy, girl, boy, girl.
Isn't that cool?
And we also have the two.
And Alan changes us all.
We have the two senior members of the board on either side of the chairman, and the, the two rookies, one rookie, one a real rookie, on the far ends.
Wow, I'm a senior, wow, I feel special.
Well, you should, anyway, back to this.
So that I gather that the consensus of the board is that we will each think about goals and objectives for the Board of Selectmen, and separately for the town administrator, and I would ask each of you to, you know, caption them appropriately, Board of Selectmen of goals and objectives for fiscal '17, Town Administrator of goals and objectives for 2017, they will become part of our discussion on that evening, if that's satisfactory with everyone, and could I ask that those, that we, let's see, the next, that meeting is on the 16th of May, so could we have those in by this time next week, by Tuesday of next week? That'll give Elaine time to collect them, get copies out to Mr. Nutting for his review.
And finally, are there any pressing topics that is at the tip of your tongues either now or in the next week that you want to have as part of that agenda that you think are critical for Carver to discuss?
Through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if it's appropriate for this meeting, but I hope it would be, is to continue to build on our working relationship with the school committee.
I've al, I've already updated Scott Neef that he's going to be interviewed by Jeff as well.
So I was right on it.
Yes. Okay, all right, everyone satisfied then with that approach?
Mm-hmm.
I should mention then, our, the rest of the meetings, we're into our summer schedule, we'll be meeting on Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, June 7, Tuesday, July 12, and Tuesday, August 16.
Unless an emergency comes up.
Or barring any need to get together for some other emergency, and I guess the, what the tradition has been, given that we aren't meeting as frequently, to authorize the chair to approve one-day special licenses and the use of town property when those requests come in and are time-sensitive and cannot be handled by the full board.